Bringing us to order, welcome to the committee of home meeting for April. It is April 8th. It is 4:35. We appear to have a quorum. So, very first thing on the order of business is to do a roll call. Whenever you are ready.
Mr. Landsman?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Furman?
Present.
Dr. Giles. She did notify me that she would be here. Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Present.
Dr. Hans noted that she'd be a few minutes late. Ms. Newman? I thought I seen her. She did notify me she would be here. Ms. Root?
Here.
Ms. May? I got no notification. Mr. Torres? No notification. Mr. Cowan?
Present.
So, so far, we don't have a quorum for the Policy Management Committee?
What count do we have for policy?
We have two out of five, or two out of six. But when the others stated that arrived, that stated they'd come. So, I don't know if you want to, what's first on the agenda, the finance, anyway?
Right.
Okay.
So, we will move forward. Next up on the agenda is, here's John Paul. Another, that gives us three of six. Okay. At this point, we're in public comment. Is there anyone locally who would like to make public comment? Not seeing anyone. Laura? Kara, sorry.
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Not seeing any. At this point, we'll close public comment. There's a second opportunity later in this meeting. So, again, we encourage anyone to sign up for public comment. At this point, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. So, I'm looking for, so, given our roll call, we do have enough for a quorum. We do have enough for finance. So, I'm looking for someone to make a motion to approve our agenda.
The move.
Thank you. There's a second as well. Great, thank you, Adam. So, a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up, we have the Finance Committee. And the first item is the financial update. Patrick, are you doing that this evening for Cheryl? Okay, great.
Okay. Presented before us on the screen shows the MDHHS payments. Also, it shows the trend for the revenues. We show a decrease of revenues from month to month, from October through February. That trend has continued for the fiscal year consistently. We had a meeting with the state and they did make an adjustment that would help to subsidize some of the funding revenue that was lost during this, a loss of revenue during the first five months. And we'll go into that later as we get into the slide presentation. But we didn't want to show a downward trend of revenues for the first five months of this fiscal year. Next slide. It shows the eligibility. There's also a downward trend consistent with the revenue for eligibles reflective of our loss of revenue that we showed in the previous slide. This is due to the redetermination, October through February. It's mostly due to the redetermination. And the state did meet with the PIHPs to help mitigate the shortfall. However, we're still expecting that it won't be enough to make up for what was lost. Slide three, please. This is the assets comparison. It talks assets and cash investments, receivables, and other assets. Other assets consist of prepaid, whereas the capital assets are the depreciation of the capital assets that's owned by OCHN. The assets are decreasing as mostly is reflection of timing, due to the timing of when bills are paid versus when expenses are incurred. And so, it's a timing, when revenue is received and when payables are paid. But we do show a decrease in the revenue. Slide four is the liabilities. Our liability categories went down, which is good. Whenever your liability is going up, down, that the bills are being paid timely. Vendor payables due to state and employee payables, along with long-term debts, which are bonds and group-owned, bonds that OCHN owns. And then the timing, it's also a timing issue when it comes to the liabilities of when the bills are paid. And so, although liabilities went down from this time last year, it did show that our asset did go down in proportion to that amount. The next slide is net position. As you can see, our net position went down as well. And that's due to our year-to-date loss, shortfall of 4.7 million from October 1 through February, the end of February. And so, when you see the difference in the net position, it's a result of the net loss that we've incurred for this fiscal year. Next slide. Revenue comparison. It compares fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24. As you can see, this time last year, the revenue, Medicaid revenue, year-to-date versus FY '23, in comparison, our revenue is higher in Medicaid funding. It's stable in the general fund and it's stable in the county funds. Revenue is a little lower in the other category, which includes investments, income, rental income. And so, overall, revenues are actually higher than they were this time last year for the first five months. In comparison for the next slide, expenses are higher as well. In FY '24, they're proportionately higher to the amount of revenue that we receive. And mostly, it's particularly due to the provider network totals. Admin still remains below 7%. Next slide. Net income. It shows a shortfall, 4.7, 4,787,205 shortfall for the fiscal year as of today, as of that date. We did want to mention, those are our financials. That's where we are as of the end of February. Did want to mention also the top 15 provider contractors. They're listed on the screen. And they relatively remain the same. They don't pretty much. Did want to mention that on March 21st, the state did hold a meeting and presented statewide enrollment of DCW and rate amendment needing for the anticipated timelines and adjustments that they're looking to, you know, add additional revenue to the budgets to try to mitigate some of the lost revenue that we incurred during the first five months of the fiscal year. They gave us a methodology to use. We used the first five months of actual revenue that we received because we know what that is. And based off that, they did a projection and gave us a rate that we could use for the last seven months. And we're in the process of working through those analytics to see where exactly how that looks for us for a budget amendment process. We look to provide that information in the near future.
Hi, everyone. I'll add a couple of comments to that. And I'm sorry I can't be there with you, but I'm not feeling well. I didn't want to come in and spread my nerve. As Patrick said, we are working on the budget amendment. And he talked about the meeting that we had with the state. They are adjusting their rates to drop in eligibles due to the redetermination. They are going to increase the capitation rate starting in April. They realized that they materially understated the number of individuals that would be disenrolled from Medicaid. So, we are currently doing a dive into analyzing that information and updating our projections for each of the three categories of Medicaid related to revenue. Our initial analysis shows the increased rates are not going to make us whole. We are seeking additional funds from the state and we'll give a comprehensive presentation once we finish the analysis.
Okay. Finance Committee, are there any questions for our CFO or Deputy CFO? Yes, John?
Yep. Kind of vote for Patrick, Cheryl. So, on the statement of net position, we're down 4.787. When we looked at the budget for this year, where would you have expected us to be based on that?
You want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'd say, based on the initial budget, we would have had a surplus for this year. But due to the redetermination, the drop in eligibles, the drop in revenue, and then the increased utilization that Patrick talked about, we find ourselves in a almost $5 million deficit at this point.
So, when we were putting together the budget, which was kind of unprecedented, given nobody's ever been through this level of redetermination, if I'm remembering correctly, we assumed about a 15% or 20% reduction in eligibles?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, as I look at this, it means even with that pretty aggressive assumption of going down, this is even worse than what we thought.
Yes. And I can say also that the budget methodology used is based off actual information now.
Okay.
Previously, it was based off of the data that we had at the time for the budget. But now, it's based off of actual revenue that we receive, based off actual eligibles. And we're going, as that is the baseline, and projecting what that rate would be going forward for the next seven months. They did flatten out the last three months so that because eligibles had fallen below the FY '20, pre-pandemic, level. And so, they leveled it out when it reached that point to give us a stable three, last three months of the fiscal year, which is July, August, and September.
Okay.
And so, so, we do have, based off your question that you asked, we would have expected to, based off the original budget, we would have expected it showing a surplus. But with the re, the way we budgeted for, based on the information given from the state, we won't show it, but be showing it what we actually show as actual for us, which this increase will certainly help. But what they're doing is giving us roughly, they infused about 116 million into the budget. And that's across the whole state. So, our per rata share of that amount is probably about, if we're using, we're using two different numbers. One is 7.3%, the other one is 10%. But we estimated our revenue share was about 10.11 million, 11.5 million of that 116.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Patrick.
So, we do also include it, we do only receive 75% of our CCBHC revenue. So, that also is taken into consideration that we're not getting all of our funding from our CCBHC. They fund us at 75% throughout the year. And that's reflective in this, in these financials. So, we're not getting all the revenue there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I'm, I'm sorry. Based on the increase and the projection, does that mean that this year, we will again, you know, we'll leave the year, fiscal year, over-budget it? That we would not leave the year with an excess in our budget? We're not going to, we're not going to break even?
That's a fair, that's a fair statement. Yes.
That is the assumption?
Yes.
Okay. So, even though we did the 15% expectation, we, either we didn't, based on the information that we received, the adjustments or whatever that they were giving to us, even that adjustment really was not sufficient for us to end the year, you know?
Well, the-
And I'll say end of year flat, based on some of the distributions-
I'll say that-
-that they've given?
Yes. In the presentation, the state gave, this is a quote, it says, "They realized that they materially understated the number of individuals that would be disenrolled from Medicaid."
Okay. So, I guess the question, and I know we'll probably address it later, but the question, if they understated it, based on what you said, is there someone going back and looking at that understatement, understated number, to say, wait a minute, maybe we need to do another adjustment to it? Or do we struggle through the year, realizing that, you know, the numbers go downhill versus, you know, a peal or running flat?
We're still having conversations with the state, trying to get them to increase our funding. But as of this point, the only known funding are what they presented in the presentation last week. And that's what we're trying to work through to figure out as close as we can, how much of that would be ours.
Thank you. So, okay. So, unfortunately, the, we find ourselves in this predicament primarily because we were, you know, we were looking at data when we did the budget. You know, we don't, we don't have a crystal ball. Relying on the state. Now, they're telling us they undercounted, so to speak, and it's worse. Okay, so, I get it, okay. But for us, what that means is a couple of things. Number one, we, there was a discussion that Finance Chair and I and Vice Chair had last week with the finance staff. I want everybody to know that because we wanted to try and understand. They had just gotten the information and hadn't had the time to fully analyze it. So, what we've asked, and I think what the board wants, is, okay, time is of the essence. So, as soon as you can, if it's at the board meeting next week, if it's at the study session, we'll clear the decks to know where are we at through this fiscal year. So, we know it is, this is going to help, the money that they're giving is going to help. But it's probably not going to be dollar for dollar, okay? So, then we can look at a budget adjustment of where we're going to be at the end of the year. We have relatively six months to take some corrective action and/or unify with the providers to seek more aid. Because at the end of the day, you know, we can cut our budget, we can do what we can do. But at the end of the day, the bulk of the money that we have here, 93, 94% of the money goes to the providers to provide services. It doesn't come to us. We're just a pass-through organization. So, I think, I know that was discussed because I watched it on the board meeting, even though I wasn't here, of the members, or rather, providers that came. And I think, and we're going to talk about it later on tonight, is that unity of interest we have in having the funding increase so that we can pass those dollars on to the providers. So, that's fundamentally what's at stake here. And I think what it's going to require, I mean, we have the short-term problem, but I think we're going to have to even begin looking into next year of how this is going to impact us because these are long-range things that are happening. And I know that we've talked about standardized rates for services, which I think absolutely has to happen, and that just has to be implemented. There's no, no more delay in that. And so, Dana said she is going to, she did present a plan that, with, you know, last year, and she's going to amend that plan of what we need to do to, number one, the short-term, and then some of the long-term things we're going to have to do to get back to restoring the, our reserves. Because that was one of our goals we wanted to have this year. And now, you know, that probably isn't going to happen. I don't know what it's going to be, and I don't want to say that because we want to have numbers and that's what you're analyzing. And I, when I understood what the state said, there's a lot of nuances in what they said. And the gap between 7.3 and 10.1% is a lot of money. That translates into millions of dollars for our organization. So, they're going to check with the state to make sure their interpretation of what the state has told them is accurate. So, we get accurate numbers and we don't get any surprises. That's, I think, the key for all of us. There's no surprises. So, my, you know, urging is to get that information analyzed, confirmed as best we can, and then have the budget amendment come to us, see what it looks like for the remainder of the year. And then with Dana's plan, and, I mean, it's just not her plan, it's the plan of the organization, what we're going to do in the short-term and then on the long-term.
Okay. And Brother Chair, I do feel we're on the right track. My take is, and I know I've spoke with the financial person, because our powers are limited, powers are limited in relation to what she may or may not be able to do. But I think it's time, one, we definitely need a great look at where we are, where we think we're going to be, and what have you. And then, as I think I've mentioned to you, we need to talk to the people that we are supporting, because we're the pass-through, those contractors that we have, in relation to what they're doing, how they feel. Somehow, we all have to come together to look at this, look at this budget piece. You know, we've sat here and we've listened to, you know, the Dutton Group, we listen to other groups, and everybody's talking about the dollars that we're no longer getting. And so, to use three church terms, Brother Chair, I think we've had a choir meeting and we've had a prayer meeting, and now it's a come-to-Jesus meeting that we have to have on this budget. And I'm hoping that over these next 30 days or what have you, that we could really look at this because I almost feel like we're whistling in the wind. Because there are people who cannot make the change, and we need to get to the people who is impacting the change that's needed. So, if we could do that, then I will be a happy camper. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I just wanted to report out that I think policy has a quorum now because Ms. Newman, Dr. Hans are here, and then as well, recognized, Dr. Giles is here as well, the finance. Is there, and in answer to the church three messages, I don't know those, but I do know no money, no mission. And we are on a mission, and we do need to make sure we can fulfill that mission with the funding we have. Now, I'm going to ask anyone else on the board who has questions. Christina?
So, um, sorry, Pastor Jones brought up public comment, and I was thinking about previous public comment as well. I don't remember how many months ago, if it was three or so, but when people were speaking about the direct care, workers' wage, someone made a comment saying we had like 50 million in surplus. So, that's on my mind, and it has been on my mind, that I feel like we could do a little bit better of a job communicating where we are financially with the public, right, and with our providers. I feel like we're on, like, it would just be helpful to make sure that we're on the same page because we can look at these graphs, right, and it seems simple, but maybe we can make it even more simple and just make sure that people are understanding where we are financially. So, when we have the presentation with the updates from that Medicaid meeting that just happened, maybe if we could have like key points listed out, a document like that, I don't know if that would involve communications. But yeah, I'm just speaking to the importance of transparency and making sure that there's understanding. Thank you.
Patrick?
Okay. I was going to respond. So, for an organization this size, our expenses monthly for just provider expenses alone and just day-to-day runs, we're pushing out 40 million a month. And so, a healthy organization has about two months' worth of reserves. So, an organization our size should hold about 80 million in reserves, and that's normal. And we're not, we're way under what our normal should look like.
What is our reserves at? I thought it was zero. Hasn't it been at zero for a while?
No. No, our reserves is about 23, let me see, right now, it's, our reserves is, 439. I got it written down here.
Is that our net possession ending?
Our net position is 44 million.
Right.
That's our net position.
But if I, if I could, just to jump in, you have to understand that's restricted and unrestricted funds. Some of those funds are in certain cubby holes, it can only be spent in those areas. And then there's unrestricted funds if we can spend it any way. And that's part, that's part of the problem. A lot of that reserve is tied up in restricted funds. But, but that's just a point, that, and maybe that'd be a good point to tell the public so they understand that when they see a number, whether it's 60 million in our original budget or 44 million now, that's just not money that we can, you know, write, you know, send out. And any governmental organization has to have reserves, other than, you know, it's basically, you know-
Otherwise, carry risk.
Right.
But I think what she's asking- I agree, that there has to be some other note, written noted, that's, we understand your problem, here's where we are. You know, we're both in, all of us in the same boat. And I think that's something, you know, and I apologize, Brother Chair, for not being recognized at this point, but I, I just think that even as we listen to public comment and we get back, there may be a better way to respond to those comments that some people are making so they understand, okay? You know, where we are. I just left the state or the county, and the county executive was just talking about what great work Dutton Farm is doing. And, you know, I want to jump up and say, wait, they were just here asking for help, okay? So, we got to recognize the services, but we also got to recognize where we are. And maybe an extra line in your report, you know, that comes out that says, this is where we are, where we're trying to be. I think that would be better. It's the same thing with that special test run that we made, okay? So, all of those things are beginning to show up on us in this financial deficit.
Thank you. So, we're really in trying to answer the question that you raised, Christina, is that we have the financial side of the answer, and Christine- is that we have the financial side of the answer, and Christine Burke is gonna share the messaging, the public messaging.
So, I, I apologize. I will make sure the board gets the document that we created early on, and that very, when the public comments first started, we did gather all of those questions, and we created an FAQ, that we update periodically, so that we send those out to the public comments, to your point, and it, it highlights where we are financially, uh, some of the impacts of redetermination, things that we're looking to do in the future. So, it is detailed, and then, as new updates come to us from the state, it, it, we updated it two weeks ago, but now we needed to update it again. What I will do is take that document, make it a little more concise, and that might be able, we might be able to include that to this board, if we know it's gonna be updated. So, those, that communication is sent out to people, it's been distributed to our providers, it's been distributed to individuals who receive services. I will make sure that the board has that document, and then, again, as it's revised and updated, which we do routinely, make sure you guys have that information as well.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Other board members? Okay, I see, uh, Dr. Hans first. I saw your hand up. Wait, wait, okay, then, then you're yielding, I'll defer to this one.
Um, I have a comment for Christine, and then I have a question. Uh, you may also want to include in that, that NCA, because you are accredited through them, has an expectation in terms of what you hold in reserve in order to be in good standing. Because people may not realize that you can't operate with just one month of reserve, uh, 'cause normally, as a rule, that can affect your accreditation, and credit rating, and all of that. Uh, my second question was to Patrick, in terms of, you said during the year, we get seventy-five percent of, um, CCBHC money. Do they make you whole at the end of the year?
Yes.
Is that when the other twenty-five percent comes in?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So, what kind of money exactly would you be expecting at year-end?
Well, last year, I think the budget was fifty-two million, so roughly about ten, twelve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Other board members? Yes, Dr. Hans.
Uh, yeah, I just want to, uh, reiterate Ms. Root's comment, in that these visuals or graphs were kind of, I think I had requested that we have visuals for better understanding of the finances for people like me, who are kind of not, not as knowledgeable about as the rest of the board may be. But it has to be also, uh, user, user-friendly for the public, uh, especially because now most of the people are attending these meetings remotely, so it becomes even more important that the visuals are understandable to the common person on the street. Thank you.
Other board member comments? Yes, Mel Kaya, Ms. Newman?
Um, I just wanted, uh, to ask, last week, there was a email from Bob Sheehan about the Milliman, uh, adjusting the rates. Did I read that right? That they're gonna be giving us more money?
Yeah, that already, we had, they already provided that information to the PIBs on March the twelfth, I mean, March the twenty-first, I presented that.
And we've estimated that to be roughly, not exactly two, but roughly two million, one for, one million for each month going forward, plus retroactive for the prior months, roughly.
Right now, that's what we.
But we don't have it for sure yet, till we see it from the state, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Other questions? All right. If not, we'll move into more of the financials. If there's anything more you wanted to cover on financials, Patrick or Cheryl?
I believe Cheryl is, uh.
Or, or are we at that point, and we'll move into the two contracts?
I think we're at that point.
We're at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then let's do that.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nasser Dost, Chief Information Officer. Uh, I'm here to present the contract for, uh, the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. In a nutshell, this is everything Microsoft, which basically is the whole platform we are using on a day-to-day basis. Microsoft Teams, Microsoft Office, Windows, um, Exchange, which is the email, Microsoft, um, SQL Server, Power BI, where we run the analytics, all of that. We had three different codes. Microsoft doesn't sell that directly, they have resellers. So, we went through the re, three different resellers, and Dell was, uh, the lowest, as you can see here, and we are requesting to go three years with them, um, on this contract. Any questions?
Uh, not hearing any. I have a question for you.
Sure.
So, it, so it's a seventy-two thousand dollar increase per year, roughly, to move from seven-hundred-and-seventy-five, from five-hundred-and-fifty-seven to seven-hundred-and-seventy-five?
Microsoft increased the licenses, unfortunately, it's kind of monopoly, and even if you have it at home, you will notice that they increased the per-user-per-month price.
Right. Is ours a per-user-per-month for these, or are, for the most part, are these an enterprise-wide all we can use?
It, it's per-licenced per month.
So, every individual within Oakland that uses it, we're paying this amount, we're paying a portion of this for each person?
Absolutely, but it, it differ from one person to the other. So, some people need Power BI Pro, some people need, um, what we call it, E1 license, which just allows for storage and things like that, while others needs E5, which has the phone service, all of these things. So, as a matter of fact, my team, I told them to go through, in detail, through all of these licenses, to make sure we are distributing the right license to the right person, with the right amount of licenses as well. Just to let you know, we always have a backup license, because you may get a new employee, or, um, whatever the case might be, we want to have, uh, that on our disposal all of the time.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? For Nasser? All right, um, oh, yes, Mel Kaya.
Sorry, I didn't understand why it was put together, Microsoft and Dell, are they one company?
Dell, no, 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 no. Dell is a reseller for Microsoft products.
Okay.
So, Dell sell the hardware named Dell, but also, they are a reseller for software by Microsoft, by Adobe, by others.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to recommend approval.
Motion to recommend approval to the board.
Board?
Thank you. So, there's a motion to support now. Any other questions? Should've asked questions after the motion. Apologize. Um, hearing none. All those in favor on the Finance Committee to approve this motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Next up on the agenda would be the Ryman Robson CPA firm consulting contract. Patrick, Cheryl, one of you guys are, both of you are presenting on this one. Cheryl, if you're talking, you're on mute.
Yep, I was, I was waiting for Patrick to get back up there.
Okay. You have the floor.
Okay, so this, uh, remit contract is for an ex, proposed contract term for four-one, twenty-four through three-thirty-one, twenty-five. Amount of contract is, uh, two-hundred thousand dollars, and, um, is presented today for, um, consideration, and, um, I know that there's still some terms of negotiation going on, so it's presented as it is now, um, and you have time to look at the contract proposal, and, and, so this is presented as two-hundred thousand as of today.
Just so you know, we're continuing to negotiate with Richard. On the terms of the contract, there were some questions on the scope, and then there were increases in the amount, so we're working with him on both of those, to try to get it lower than what's showing.
Okay. So, so first I'll ask for a motion, a second, and then questions. That doesn't necessitate a, an approval, that's.
Right.
So, I'll look for the motion.
And now, seconded.
Okay, great. Now, is there any, are there any questions by the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, you have the floor.
So, um, Cheryl, I heard what you said, so, I guess, first of all, two-hundred would be the worst case, and then, how close are we on the terms of what would be done, so we would have a sense in the next, ideally, the next week, if not the next two weeks? What's all in the scope, and would that be closer to the one-seventy than the two-hundred?
I'm hoping it will be. We, we're planning to try to have something to, within the next week, before the board meeting, but, um, I'm actually, at this point, waiting to hear back from Richard. We sent him back some adjustments that we wanted to make last week, and I know he's out of his shape, but I wasn't able to get a hold of him. So, as soon as I have a conversation with him, we should have an update.
Other questions?
Like, I guess what I'm struggling with is, we're approving this, and I know it's not our formal approval, but we're kinda going forward somewhat open-ended, which, if it's not tied down by the next board meeting, we're, it's gonna go to the board meeting and just not be voted on, so.
Right. Understood.
Cheryl, just one thing, 'cause I know there's been a lot of back and forth on this particular contract, um, but I would like you to have in your possession, before next week, an email from the other side, saying, "We agree to everything in contract revision number three," whatever it is. Because I, once we vote on something, there's gonna be no more, no more negotiation, okay?
Understood.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions from many other board members? Okay, um, at this point, I, let's see, there's some more discussion, I will, uh, do a roll call vote of our, uh, Finance Committee to approve this, uh, motion. That's already been made and seconded.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Dr. Giles?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Landsman?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. So, let's see, the mission at this point, Cheryl and Patrick, is get that final okay from them, so that we can vote to approve. Our committee has already recommended we move ahead, should we have that. Okay?
Will do.
And I guess proceeds really, we'll go through in, in detail at the board meeting.
We'll have to.
It's not just gonna be.
Right.
So, it's, okay.
That will be the intent, we'll go through it again then, but we have tentative approval at this point, since we have a tentative contract, not a final contract. All right. Let's see what else is on the agenda. Um, at this point, I think we're going to move control over to, uh, Ms. Woodruff for the policy side. So, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Landsman. Okay, first on the agenda for policy is the experience satisfaction update from Wendy Schiller and Lindsay McCracken.
Good afternoon. I'm Wendy Schiller, the manager of quality improvement, and I'm here today with Lindsay McCracken. She's a quality analyst on the quality team. So, last November, Lindsay and I presented on the fiscal year twenty-three member experience report, and during that meeting, uh, there was a request from a board member to have a semi-annual update on some of the improvement activities that we're really focusing on in those areas of the survey that didn't meet the goal. So, the survey is only administered annually, so we can't really give a semi-annual update on the scores of the survey, but what we're gonna do is really focus on those areas and the four domains, all the quality monitoring activities that we're doing, to hit those key areas of focus, and how we're performing on those as well. Next slide. So, I don't wanna reiterate everything we already talked about, but the purpose of the survey is really to improve services for people we serve. And the people that were surveyed were those that have been in services for twelve consecutive months or more. And there are four key domains that are the focus of the evaluation, and Lindsay's gonna talk about different monitoring activities we're doing in all four of those areas, the area of services, access, availability, and acceptability. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Lindsay.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Eclipse Day. So, for each of the subgroups, we'll be reviewing the interventions that were developed for fiscal year twenty-four, and provide updates for ongoing monitoring of those questions that did not meet their goal for fiscal year twenty-three. So, the first subgroup that we are looking at is acceptability. The intervention that was developed for those questions is related to increased communication. Um, the effectiveness of services not only is impacted by staff turnover and shortages, but it is also impacted by ineffective communication between treatment teams. So, in order to combat the lack of communication occurring within the treatment streams, OCHN will audit the care coordination protocol, and the baseline data is on the next slide. The care coordination audit for fiscal year twenty-three is a baseline audit, so this, that's the first year that scores are available for this. The goal with this baseline audit is to identify areas for improvement and areas the network is doing well in. In fiscal year twenty-three, ninety records were reviewed. Of those, eighty-three percent indicated that there was evidence of coordinating care among providers within the OCHN Care Provider Agency, providing services within the last twelve months. Another data point we are looking at in regards to the acceptability in these two questions is looking at the IPOS periodic review satisfaction. During the IPOS periodic review, which is done quarterly, individuals have an opportunity to provide feedback on their level of satisfaction with the services they are receiving. During fiscal year twenty-three, ninety-three point one-eight percent of individuals reported that they were either very satisfied or satisfied with their services rendered. The next subgroup we will cover is availability. The interventions developed for this group are related to internal auditing functioning. The IPOS protocol audit tool has been reviewed to ensure questions related to persons served being given information about different kinds of services and supports available to them, how to manage their condition, and about natural supports are included. Another intervention that was completed in fiscal year twenty-four was, um, I did meet with the clinical directors in February to specifically talk about question nineteen. This is a question that has consistently not met the goal for the last few years. The question is, did anyone talk to you about whether to include your family or friends in your counseling or treatment? So, the feedback from the clinical directors was related to the language in the question. We would like to talk to our vendor, which is CSS, to see if they could adjust the wording in the question, or help the individuals served who are responding to the survey make the connection between natural supports and the language that's being used in their IPOS development, to the language that's specific in the question. Uh, there was also a recommendation to reuse, review the language of counseling or treatment, because, um, they might not necessarily use the language that's being used by clinical staff within our network, they might be using therapy or case management. Next slide, please. So, this slide is showing the results of the fiscal year twenty-three IPOS audit for all populations, and so you will see the audit question, the fiscal year twenty-three IPOS audit score, in comparison to the ECHO score. The results of this audit are shared at the clinical director's meeting and with the Quality Improvement Council. The standard for each question is ninety-five percent. When completing the, uh, analysis of the audit results, OCHN's clinical analysts provide recommendations for improvement in their final reports that are shared with the providers as well. For question number nineteen, the audit protocol has two questions that relate. The first is, was there a discussion about including family and natural supports in the planning process, which scored ninety-point-three-three percent? And does the OIPOS address natural supports, which scored eighty-eight-point-six-seven percent? which scored 88.67%? In comparison, the ECHO survey score was 54.55%. For question number 20, the question that relates from the audit protocol is, does the IPOs address community inclusion, and that scored 73.67%? In comparison, the ECHO survey score was 60.98%. For question 21, the question that relates from the audit protocol is, was the full array of services and supports and services relevant to the individual's preferences and needs discussed and offered, and that scored 92.33%? In comparison, the ECHO survey score was 68.92%. Finally, for question number 22, there are two questions from the audit protocol that relate, the first is, does the IPOs address community inclusion, which scored 73.67%? And does the IPOs address natural supports, which again scored 88.67%? And in comparison, the ECHO survey scored 77.93%. The third subgroup we will cover is related to services. The first intervention that was developed for fiscal year '24 based on the fiscal year '23 results is related to increased staff practitioner recruitment. Some of those areas were around providing, offering hiring and retention bonuses, implementing new strategies to recruit staff such as increasing the number of student interns, onboarding new SED providers, reviewing hiring practice barriers that are impacting providers. The second intervention is specific to question number 12. OCHN will revise current policies and practices such as the due process notice to include language at a sixth grade reading level, as this question was assessing if services and supports were explained in a way that the respondent could understand. So we actually, I did meet with the Quality Improvement Council Committee and the credentialing meetings back in March and we received a lot of really great feedback from the providers on what is going, what they're doing in regards to recruitment and retention. Some of our providers reported that they're working with staffing agencies, they're working on increasing their marketing strategies and looking at different marketing strategies because traditional ones with like LinkedIn, they find aren't working as well as they used to. They did mention offering signing bonuses, but brought up a good point that they're competing with Detroit Wayne and their signing bonuses, which are substantially more than what is being offered within Oakland County. They also did mention that they are often competing with one another to hire for those positions, so trying to recruit for those positions, knowing that they're working against the other providers in the network who are also trying to hire case managers and therapists. Another area that they're working on is leveraging benefits, so one provider mentioned a PTO exchange, so at the end of the year, any hours they have left over, that can go towards their 401K or childcare, leveraging retirement benefits and exploring student loan forgiveness options. The final subgroup is accessibility. As with the services subgroup, the primary intervention for these measures is related to increased staff recruitment. The second intervention is specific to question three, which asks if the individual got the services and supports needed on the phone. An identified barrier while completing the initial report was that there were unclear guidelines of which services could still be provided via telemedicine when the emergency order was lifted, and OCHN has now confirmed those guidelines from MDHHS and has communicated that with the providers. For ongoing monitoring for accessibility, one area we look at is performance indicator 2A, this is looking at the number of individuals who received a bio-psychosocial assessment within 14 days of their request for services. This table is showing the trend over the last five quarters, with fiscal year '23 quarter four being our best quarter at 51.41%. I do want to note, there was no standard for this indicator, since fiscal year '20 the state was gathering baseline data and a new standard was implemented in fiscal year '24 quarter one, and that standard is 57%. Access has been increasing, or has looked at increasing the number of access screeners, so they did that in fiscal year '23 from 10 to 13 with the goal of to maintain those 13 screeners in fiscal year '24. Could you go back a slide, please? Thank you. And then Wendy's going to speak a little bit about the practitioner availability survey.
In fiscal year '23, we started doing a new survey, it was kind of a pilot, and we needed to do this to meet one of the standards for our accreditation, and this had to do with the first available appointment that practitioners have to see people. So we don't really have access to everyone's calendars to see what that might be, so we had to survey the actual practitioners and staff themselves to get that number. So the average, the survey responses was seven days, so that, we were pretty pleased with that. The state indicator says that someone has to start services within 14 days, so we wanted to know what the actual number was for the earliest available that staff had. So we're going to continue that survey and expand on that as well, so that was an important indicator we wanted to take a look at.
Related to question three as well, which was asking about receiving services via the phone, we also wanted to showcase two other data points. The first is that 57.5% of services delivered in fiscal year '23 were delivered via telemedicine. Additionally, OCHN does conduct a telemedicine survey, so out of the 212 respondents who completed that survey in fiscal year '23, 94.81% of individuals reported they were satisfied with their telemedicine visit.
So before we conclude and ask for questions, I did want to mention that we just went through a very extensive audit of waiver services by MDHHS that lasted several months. One component of that audit is that they do interviews with people served, so that's a really important indicator to us of how we're doing, and the auditors were very complimentary and we had a lot of great strengths based on people's feedback that, I just wanted to share some of the main strengths that they talked about in our exit conference for that audit. They mentioned a high level of satisfaction with the telehealth options that we have in our network. People were very happy with the high use of self-determined arrangements that we implement in this network. There was a high focus on community-focused service options for people and just an overall high satisfaction with the clinical case management that people are receiving. So it was nice to hear positive feedback, so I wanted to kind of end on that positive note, so. Does anyone have any other questions?
Go ahead, Nethnae Man.
It's not a question, it's a comment. I know we've heard what ECHO stands for, but I don't remember, and then for the benefit of people in the, online that wouldn't know, if you could just tell us what the ECHO and IPOs stand for.
Yes, the ECHO is the Experience of Care and Health Outcomes, that's the name of the survey we've been using. And IPOs is Individual Plan of Service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to compliment you on the work that you're doing and certainly the reports that you got back said you guys are doing a great job. Daily, there's the question of, do people know what's available, what's not available, and how they're talking, and it's, I don't know how you tackle it, okay? I'll be honest with you, I hear it all the time, you know, we were out this past week and just trying to help people understand services, and I don't know if some of it is people are not aware. I had a great experience, this gives me an opportunity to speak of a great young lady, to hear Jessica Widenski, that works with the organization, she spent a couple of days with me and, you know, just working the crowd, working the crowd and dealing with people who did not know. She was very effective in saying, "This is available." People were saying, "Is this available, is this or not, how do I contact you?" And so we had, we had material that we passed out, but it raises the issue in relation to how do we get the word out, what we're doing, what's available, and then people having a comfort level in asking. So, thank you for what you do, appreciate it and thanks to this great young lady here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for these analytics, I think it's a very good start and some, it's also encouraging. But when I look at the data, I'm always looking for where we can do better, and it may not be in your domain, but on the clinical side, I would like to know about this question 21, 22, as to what are we going to do about it? It doesn't seem to be very much change, 60% on the score and your audit score is 73, similarly 77.9 on the score, ECHO score, and on your audit score, it's a little bit kind of in between, higher and lower, so I would like to know what are we doing about that? Thank you.
So, the clinical analysts that conduct the analysis of the data, they provide recommendations to the providers when they're giving them their results, and a lot of it was focused on retraining staff. So we know with turnover being high and retention kind of struggling, there's been a lot of new people in and out the door, so we're emphasizing to providers, these are the things that need to be done, and these are conversations that need to be had when working with individuals and working on their individualized plan of service.
So, my understanding is that we are also doing training, or we are offering training to the provider staff, or are there other resources? Because what I have heard especially during COVID was that, especially for the direct care workers, the access was very difficult. Sometimes they had to go to McDonald's to get the internet connection or go to the library, some of the training they could not complete without access to a computer and most of them don't have a computer, they do most of their training on their cell phones. So I think that is something we need to look at as well. I know that there are organizations that are developing training sites for staff as well as for families, such as ARC of Oakland County, I think they have just recently started a training center there, but I think we need to do a little more on that ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Lansman?
Thank you, I have two questions. One of them is having to do with the audit and ECHO, which is the more important results or are they both because they're very different?
I mean, yeah, that's a hard question because they are, it's, someone's perception of something is very important compared to what we see when we look at the actual performance or the actual documentation, so how can we get those to get closer? That's, that's the challenge, so. And some of that is, you know, making sure that the questions are understandable in the survey, like Lindsay said, some of the things we're really looking at, how is it being asked and what kind of terminology we're using so they're understanding what's being asked. And then just working with the clinical team to figure out, you know, how can we get these better aligned and get people to really understand, you know, the services offered and what we're trying to do with them, and so that is part of what we're trying to tackle, I don't know if you want to add to that, but.
No, I agree with the emphasis of how do you get, you know, we can look at compliance scores all we want and say this is what was marked on the IPOs, but an individual needs to be able to say and perceive that their treatment is going well and that they are receiving those things, so how do we ensure that those things are actually taking place and this is direct feedback from them? So both are very important, one is quantitative, one is qualitative, it's how do we get those scores closer together?
Okay, then, now I understand qualitative and quantitative. I wasn't sure, I was, they were apples to apples, but they're really apples to oranges, okay. The other question I had is for that P, it's either PI 2A or P1 2A values, the numbers are at 48, 43, 43, 34, and then 51% by quarter, quarter by quarter of the last, one, two, three, four, five quarters, but you said that the target value is to, what was it, 57%?
Yep, 57.
So what do we need to do or what do we need to have our providers do to get us over that goal number, to hit 60% say, for instance?
There is a lot of work being done from both the OCHN side and from the provider's side. One of the things was increasing the number of access screeners, another thing is looking at paperwork delays, especially with our DD population and SED waiver kiddos, it takes a little bit longer to get them in the door, and this is from the first time they make a phone call to when they can get in to get an assessment, so if you're waiting 10, 14, sometimes more days to get the paperwork in, but what other things can be done to try to decrease that? And then from the provider's side, if they are not meeting their performance metrics, they are writing up performance improvement plans and they are, our access team has also been working with the providers to ensure that there is enough calendar availability in our electronic health records so that we are able to get people in as soon as possible.
So then those, those services are primarily handled by Common Ground and a little bit from New Oakland?
So those are the crisis services, this is just ongoing behavioral health services, so from our CPAs.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Dr. Giles?
Hello, I want to say thank you again for this information, but I wanted to just clarify, the practitioner availability survey, you said seven days for a routine appointment, is that an intake or is that actually with your assigned case manager or your assigned therapist, which, is it intake or?
No, it's the first appointment after the intake, so how quickly could someone get in once they've been assessed?
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one question, related to telemedicine, what services can still be offered via telemedicine? Since that was the question on the survey.
Yeah, there are a lot of very specific codes that are allowed and not allowed, I mean, a lot of it is the case management, of course, so I don't really have that list in front of me, we could provide that to you if that's of interest.
Thank you. And this was just a receiving file, correct? Yes. Thank you very much for your update.
I have one question as well down here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I caught myself looking down there.
It's related to telemedicine, what does the term mean though, I know, has it evolved? Is that virtual then, is that primarily what it is?
Yes, anything that's not face-to-face could be considered telemedicine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we will have the Centennial Event Review Committee update by Adam Hamilton. Welcome.
Good evening, thanks for having me. My name's Adam Hamilton, I'm the clinical director here at OCHN. So I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of the activities of our Sentinel Event Review Committee, or what we call our CERC for short. So predominantly what this committee does is we review incidents that have come in and rise to a certain level that require us to look closely at them to see if some form of remediation is necessary. So there are many types of incidents that come to OCHN, risk events, critical incidents, immediately reportable events, and particularly the CERC is looking at critical incidents to determine whether they meet the definition to be considered a sentinel event. Not necessarily all that we'll do, but that is predominantly the focus of the CERC. When there is a sentinel event, we request that the provider who's associated with that do what's called a root cause analysis, and this is really the primary way of addressing issues that we have identified through the review of the particular event that the committee looked at. So we'll talk a little bit more about what that means as we get further in. So the, the CERC is, comprises staff here at OCHN, we have staff representing the clinical practice team, our chief medical officer, our substance use disorder team, I sit on the CERC, our quality management team has staff who participates, our Office of Recipient Rights has staff who participates in the CERC, and everybody has a unique role and will contribute different things depending on the particular focus of the meeting that week. Generally, there's an agenda we adhere to, the bulk of the work, as I mentioned, is looking at critical incidents, however, we do look at some data, we look at some different things on a monthly basis or on a regular basis beyond just looking at critical incidents. The CERC meets weekly, again, I talked a little bit about the primary focus and how we address concerns that we've identified through the root cause analysis process. When a provider When a provider completes a root cause analysis, that is submitted to us. There's very specific timeframes around how that process works. And we will review it to determine if we believe it's appropriate and will likely be effective to mitigate the likelihood of recurrence of the incident that we've reviewed. In fiscal year twenty three, you can see that we had nearly fifteen thousand incident reports that were submitted. That's down somewhat from fiscal year twenty two. We think that fiscal year two thousand and nineteen is a bit of a data anomaly. We can't explain the, I think that maybe there were some duplicates in the data there. That predates me being in this role by several years. So I can't really explain why that number is considerably higher. But so it should be mentioned that really every incident report that's submitted, so all fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy two of those, those are processed here, they're looked at, they're coded. And then when that initial review of an incident is done, there are certain definitions that the person is mindful of and looking at it. And if it rises to the level of being a critical incident, this is again predominantly what the CERC is looking at. There's something else called a risk event. I'll tell, I have some data on that that's included in here. I'll talk to you a little bit about what those are. And then we also have what's called an immediately reportable event. So I'll explain a little bit about that as we get further in. So this is data on risk events for fiscal year twenty three. And a risk event is any event that places an individual at risk for poor outcomes. This could include things like actions that might be directly taken by an individual that could cause harm to themselves or cause harm to someone else. Could also be, one of the examples of a risk event is when somebody has two or more admissions to a medical hospital within a twelve month period. So we were able to identify those events and look into those situations as well. In fiscal year twenty three, there was one hundred and nineteen risk events. And that is down by about sixty from the previous year. And the most common risk event was hospitalizations, two or more due to medical illness or medical condition in fiscal year twenty three. So if you go ahead and advance, this really just sort of gives you a different view of the data in that table. So for risk events, what we look to do is identify a causal factor for each risk event. And this gives us information about what might have been going on, that increased vulnerability to that event happening. And then also informs us and then the providers about what can be done to reduce the likelihood that that type of event will recur in the future. Go ahead and advance. We looked at this data by residential arrangement as well. So this gives us some information about where are risk events occurring? Who's really doing reporting on those for us? And in looking at that data, you can see that the most risk events are occurring or are reported by individuals who are living in a private residence with natural or adoptive family with whom, upon whom they depend. Second to that would be licensed residential settings reporting risk events. And then third would be individuals living in an independent setting. This table looks at critical incidents. You can see across the top, there's several different types of critical incidents that we track. And those are, when I mentioned the codes. And so all of these things have a code associated with them that helps us to track. A critical incident is a death by suicide, a non-suicide death, emergency medical treatment or hospitalization due to injury or a medication error. It could also be an arrest. So we're looking at several things in the CERC committee. Any of those things that I just listed could potentially rise to the level of being a sentinel event. And again, that's what we're really reviewing and trying to determine at the CERC. The slide, again, it really breaks it down by population and the different types of critical incidents. Deaths generated the most critical incidents. And particularly, it seemed that adults with mental illness had the highest number of critical incidents during fiscal year twenty three. And emergency medical treatment due to injury generated the most critical incidents among individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities. In fiscal year twenty two, deaths were also the highest number. And so these could be, it's often the case that it's deaths because of natural causes, illness, really any type of death does warrant our review. So it's, I pointed out to say that it's not always the case that we're reviewing deaths because there was something inherently problematic. But it does give us pause and we do take the time to review every one of them. The next slide again just gives you that different view based on the type of incident. And then the next slide breaks it down by living arrangement again. So for critical incidents, licensed specialized residential is generating the most of those incident reports, followed by individuals living in private residence with family who they are dependent upon. And then independent living would be in third in terms of the number of critical incidents. Okay. So again, when we're looking at a critical incident, we're really trying to determine is this particular critical incident something that rises to the level of being considered a sentinel event? Sentinel event, when the CERC determines that a critical incident is meets the level of a sentinel event, that's when we request a root cause analysis. That's when we really ask our providers to do a deeper dive into understanding what may have precipitated that event and what could be done to prevent it in the future. The definition of a sentinel event is an unexpected occurrence involving death or serious physical or psychological injury or risk thereof. Serious injury specifically includes loss of limb or function. So we had in fiscal year twenty three, seven critical incidents that rose to the level of being considered sentinel events. We requested RCAs for all seven of those and the CERC reviews. And sometimes we send them back for revisions. Sometimes we send them back with recommendations for revisions. But we do not approve them until we believe that they are satisfactory to address and remediate the probability or to mitigate the probability of a recurrence of that event. The other thing that we've started doing, we were sort of informally doing this, but decided it would really benefit us to start tracking this more closely, looking at this more closely. We started tracking what we call a clinical concern. So this is potentially something that doesn't rise to the level of a sentinel event. It may be something that we discover in doing a review of an incident. It's not necessarily directly related to the incident, but gives us pause, leads us to wonder about an opportunity for a provider to make an improvement or head off a problem before it begins. So we're tracking these and we've sort of come up with a way to categorize them that's listed on the slide here. And what we're doing is doing some outreach to the providers, doing some follow up on these things. And then now we're tracking them to see. So we started doing that tracking in June of last year. And I think we had, oh, we tracked twelve of them through the remainder of the fiscal year. So a few every month that we're coming across as we're just kind of going about the normal business of the CERC. Immediately reportable events, these are the different types of immediately reportable events that we are required by policy and by MDHHS policy and contract to report. So those are listed here. We had ten in fiscal year twenty three and they were all suicide deaths. The root cause analysis is the primary tool that we use to address problems that we identify through the CERC. We ask when we find that a provider needs to complete a root cause analysis, we ask that they adhere to our timelines for that. And to complete the RCA, the provider has to focus on several things. And we ask them to look at systems and processes. So what is going on internally in their systems? What is going on in terms of process or procedure at their organization that might have, that might be a gap, that might pose a risk for this type of event occurring again? We ask that they look at progressing from just looking at specific causes in clinical processes to general organizational processes and systems. And we prompt them through the root cause analysis process to really ask the question, why, why, why? And go deeper with each time they ask that question, why? Identifying opportunities to change systems or processes is really the primary thrust of this activity, to identify ways to close gaps, to reduce risk and to reduce the likelihood of these events happening again. There is, as part of the process, there's an action plan that's required and there's also a measure of effectiveness. So something for them to follow up on to see if their action plan was effective. I mentioned at the outset that one of the things that we do is we look at different data as part of the CERC. In addition to just reviewing individual cases, we do step back, zoom out, look at data. We're trying to find trends in that. We've actually been working on some new dashboards this year. We look at who's reporting incidents. We look at where are incidents occurring. We look at data broken out by the type of provider, the population that's being served. On a quarterly basis, the clinical analysts who all participate in the CERC also work with our CERC coordinator to develop a report that's reviewed at the CERC. And one of the things that we're now doing in that report, we have a dashboard that helps us to do this, is we're looking at any individual who had more than ten incident reports in a quarter. And what this has really helped us to do is to identify potential situations where somebody may be in need of more supports than they're getting, where somebody may be in need of a higher level of care. What we've actually found through the process of looking at that is that it's very, it's more, it's common when somebody is showing up in that data set that they're in a specialized residential setting and that there is usually, it's usually a variety of things going on behaviorally and/or they're potentially refusing their medication. And so every medication refusal generates an incident report. And so once we determine, okay, this individual has all these incidents that have occurred, we've gone back and we've been able to look and we've asked the question, are they getting enhanced staffing supports in this residential setting that might help to directly address and mitigate future occurrences of the behavior that's led to the incident reports? Are, is there a behavioral treatment plan in place for the persons? And overwhelmingly, what we're finding is the providers are using those tools to really help people address the things that are initially generating incident reports. And then we see people sort of falling off that dashboard after those enhanced supports have been in place for some time. So that's, I think, good news because that's really what we would want to see. It's what we would expect to see. So just in terms of how this impacts people, really what it does is it gives us a glimpse into how things are going at the service delivery level, how services are working for people, where there might be gaps, where there might be issues. And really what we're looking for when we're talking about gaps and issues is, like I mentioned, gaps in process, systemic gaps. Also thinking in terms of our providers following what we believe to be best practice. We've laid out best practice in several different protocols depending on the type of activity that's occurring. And oftentimes, when the CERC determines that an event is sentinel, we're saying this was a sentinel event because we have this protocol. We believe it to be best practice because research says so. And in this particular situation, we don't believe it was followed. So that is, that is really commonly the rationale for why we would request that root cause analysis, why we would deem an event a sentinel event. And it's really important process that we have going to help us ensure that people who are actually receiving services are receiving services that adhere to best practice. Most of the activities of the CERC are laid out in policy and procedure. We have a Sentinel Events Policy. We have procedures around the monitoring of risk events, the operations of the CERC and how we request, review and approve RCAs. These policies and procedures are reviewed on a regular basis. And then we also report those up as part of the yearly co-op that our QM team does. From a funding or financial perspective, really this is an administrative operation. So the primary impact on funding is just the staff time to do the work. We do offer some, you know, training to the network in terms of our policies and protocols. And, you know, I think we believe that really the work that we're doing to implement those policies and protocols and support the network and adhering to them, it improves outcomes for individuals receiving services. And I think that is an important thing in the long run, even when you're considering, you know, financial impact. I will take your questions.
Ms. Root?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So I was looking at the suicide deaths on the different slides. And there's different numbers. If you could just explain that, like critical incidents, it was six. The deemed sentinel, it was one. And then immediately reportable, there were ten suicide deaths.
So not every suicide death is going to be a sentinel event.
Okay.
Right? Some will.
Okay.
You know, the other thing, this is actually an important question because there's a point of clarification to make. We have more, and it's particularly OCHN staff who are engaged in the community now. And through the work that they're doing, particularly I'm thinking of the coresponders that we have on our justice team. You've probably heard about them. They have, they don't have another mechanism to report incidents other than our standard incident reporting process. And some of the suicide deaths that we've reported out on are actually related to individuals who are not in services. So there's no provider involved. There's no services to look at in terms of were they effective? Were they adequate? And there's nobody to request a root cause analysis from. So you're going to see a little disparity because there was maybe a couple of those in fiscal year twenty three and we've seen a couple already in this fiscal year two.
Okay. So that's seen in the immediately reportable slide?
Yes. I mean, we're reporting everything regardless of whether somebody is actually open in services. I mean, of course, we provide explanation and, you know, in terms of the nuance around, you know, whether someone was open and what services they were receiving. But we do look at all of them, yeah.
Okay. And then can you just quickly explain the difference between the suicide deaths that are critical incidents and then the one that was deemed sentinel? What makes it that?
So a suicide death that is deemed sentinel is a critical incident that rises to the level of our definition of a sentinel event because there was clearly some issue with the services that the person was receiving that we believe increased the risk or vulnerability to that undesirable outcome for the person. Yeah. So commonly, when we've had clinical concerns and I'm not specifically remembering why that particular suicide death was a sentinel event, but commonly when we've had concerns around suicide deaths, we have our clinical pathway for suicide care. So what we're seeing is maybe somebody should have been referred for that clinical pathway and they were not.
Okay. Thank you.
I would speculate that that was the reason.
Yeah. And I'm glad to see that we have the no blame or shame in here, right? We just, we learn from mistakes and try to implement better practices to keep people safe.
Yeah. It does really require a collaborative effort with our providers to make this, to make these improvements.
Right. Thank you.
Of course.
Dr. Han?
Yeah, so I just have a follow up question on what Ms. Root asked. So the RCA is done on all suicides and then we decide whether it was a sentinel event. And then we decide whether it was a sentinel event or how does it?
An RCA is done on all sentinel events. So the, the CIRC will review the critical incident as it comes to us. In this, in the example you're talking about, the suicide death. And if we feel that there were problems with the services, gaps in care, some protocol or best practice that wasn't followed, somebody did not use appropriate clinical judgment in supporting the person, then we would request the RCA at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Torres?
On the incident report slide, you noted the anomaly in 2019. But then from 2020 to 23, there's kind of an ebb and, you know, up and down. Is there any explanation for it? It's, it, 2023 was down, you know, substantial amount as opposed to 2022?
I could, I conjecture to some degree what we're seeing there is maybe some things to do with the pandemic. You know, I can't, I can't say unequivocally that that is, that is the explanation. But I think the other thing that is really, that compels me to that hypothesis is that, you know, we were really seeing a lot of staffing challenges at that time, right? And so, you know, I want, I, I'm, I'm wondering if it's possible that, you know, people in the process of receiving services, they're, they're getting sick more, they're going to the hospital more because illness abounds during the pandemic. But then also, you know, that was impacting staff. And so maybe staffing shortages in some areas potentially. I, I can only speculate though. We see, unfortunately, we, we do see some variability in terms of reporting of incidents. So one of the things that we, you know, the sort of the, the adage is, and Vicky can tell you about this, you know, if you're in, if you're in doubt, you should report, right? So people take that differently. So sometimes we see lots of incident reports that, you know, probably don't need an incident report, like somebody didn't want to take out the garbage or something in their, in their group home. I'm not sure that needs an incident report. It's an ongoing objective to train and orient people to incident reporting. It's importance, how to do it effectively, how to do it clearly. So I think when you have a lot of new staff or a lot of staff turnover, like in the pandemic, we may see that is a bit of a confounding variable too.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Next on the agenda is the mental health awareness proclamation. Ms. Weiner?
Good evening, everyone. Suzanne Weiner, Director of Communications and Community Outreach. And my apologies for not being in person tonight. As in the past, OCHN is, will be recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month with a proclamation that will be distributed to our cities, villages, and townships, as well as our school boards for acceptance. During this time, we call upon our citizens and these entities to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness. And I believe the board members all have the proclamation in their packet, but I would also like to read it aloud. It begins, "Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2024. Whereas mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, it affects how well, how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas, mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. And whereas, Mental Health America's MHA 2023 State of Mental Health is America, survey ranks Michigan as 25th in the nation for prevalence of mental illness and 20th in the nation for access to care. And whereas, May 1st through May 31st, 2024 is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. MHA's 2024 theme is Where to Start: Mental Health in a Challenging World, which highlights getting back to the basics, including self-care, coping skills, advocacy for mental health, and knowing where to seek additional help. And whereas, Oakland Community Health Network joins our national partners in promoting this year's Where to Start campaign. And whereas, mental health management ensures that individuals can focus on their ability to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society while promoting diversity, inclusion, and acceptance. And whereas, improved systems of care for vulnerable populations, access to non-emergent and non-crisis services, advanced integrated physical and behavioral healthcare, along with provider relations, helps to fortify services coordinated by OCHN. And whereas, Oakland Community Health Network and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. Now therefore be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes May 2024 as May as Mental Health Awareness Month. OCHN calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all with mental illness to promote recovery and a higher quality of life." And that completes the proclamation.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Do we, does this go to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners as well? Okay. And then the Mental Health Awareness Month, I feel like I should know this, but is this, is it passed by the state legislature? Is that something that's recognized by the state of Michigan?
Typically, yes, the governor does do a recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month.
Okay, and, okay, thank you.
Ms. Root?
Do we want to add faith-based organizations at the end? I know we normally do that in our proclamations. Guess I'm opening that up to our board members and to you, Suzanne.
I'm happy to add it. That is good.
I would be interested in, I would be interested in the distribution of this because that is a big issue, and all of us are talking about mental health. And I'm just wondering, the distribution, how far out are we reaching to make sure that people know that, you know? Is it going to the mayors of the different cities or township, the trustees or townships or what have you? They said, hey, you know, we're, we're really focused on this, and we're really concerned about it because it's in every community, it's at every grade, every social, ethnic level. And so I'm just wondering, what is the extent of our distribution?
Yes, it does go to all of the, the mayors, so all the cities, villages, and townships in Oakland County, as well as the school boards. And we're happy to distribute it to our faith-based community as well.
Chair? Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
And, and Pastor Jones, just so you know, typically they ask either that this put out, be put on agenda in May of the elected body of the community to either adopt a similar resolution or to acknowledge it at the meeting. And so I think that's very important. I know from my days of being mayor, we would have these types of resolutions, and specifically this one come before us, you know, every year. So it does get some broader reach from people who are either at the meeting. And also, there's different groups in the community that come out to support the resolution. So I think that's important. So we do get a broader reach just by doing that. But if we can get it to more people, that's, that's great.
Thank you. And I, you know, part of that, you know, I, I'm on so many different committees, and some of this doesn't even reach them. And that's what I'm very, very concerned, you know, about that. And how do we pass that information along? The other thing that, that happens in a lot of group meetings and settings, and one of the policies we're trying to instill is tell me something I don't know or that I haven't heard because people hear it in one meeting and they won't tell it in another meeting. And so what happens is it's only a limited number of persons that, you know, that get that information. And I'll just take case in point, there's seven councilpersons in, in the city of Pontiac. The mayor may get the note, but are the councilpeople saying something to all of their districts and recognizing, you know, what month it is and what we can do with a number of different organizations and groups that continue to pop up dealing with mental health? And yet they're, you know, maybe they're not even aware. Or maybe they're aware, but they're not sharing the information. And that's, that's the thing. And the, the onus becomes on all of us. I plan to take this back, you know, to our group. I'll get to mention that on April the 23rd and share that, share it with everyone. And, but I think that, and it's not, it's not a fault or, you know, of Suzanne. I, you know, I think she's done a great job with this. I'm just concerned with, once people get it, what are they doing with it? And how are they spreading it?
Well, we're glad to start with your community to get it to more of the council members. And we can research and try to find ways to get to additional. We've already actually received one request from the city of Southfield for the proclamation because they are accustomed, as Mr. Cowan mentioned, they are accustomed to this proclamation each year. And they wanted to ensure that it was on their, their docket for their meetings.
Suzanne, I'm just gonna, so one of the things they're asking for, I think, too, is a little bit of the follow-up. So when we send out the proclamations, we also do press releases, our social media announcements throughout the county in the state. Then we track, we have a sign-up sheet. Sometimes we just get the proclamations in the mail. Sometimes we get asked to send a representative. So there is documentation that we keep to see and find out who is following. And then we'll do our, our normal media research as well because you might see some update somewhere like in the Oakland Times or city council has released information that they have accepted the proclamation. So we do monitor that data and to see how many people are using the information and sharing it.
I just think it's such a big issue, as you all know. And my concern is, are we reaching everybody that we need to reach to further, you know, discuss this? And with so many different groups focusing in on mental health, to make sure that, yeah, this is very, very important. What are you doing there, you know, fraternity, sororities, organizations, groups, whatever? And just the recognition to, to further highlight it, that, that's, that's my point. But I think you do a great job, you know, I'm not, that's, that's not the question on, on your part is how do we further get that word out?
Ms.? Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Bear, can you do a roll call vote for the policy committee to move to the full board?
Dr. Han? Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next we'll have County of Fiscal Responsibility agreements by Adam Genova.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'll be the second Adam presenting tonight, third Adam in the room, so welcome all. So tonight I'm talking about COFER. And before moving forward, I'd just like to say thank you to Jasmine and Lauren and Gillian and Kara for helping put this together, gathering all the information. So we definitely had a good team come together and gather the information. So COFER does stand for County of Fiscal Responsibility. And you can find the guidance for it from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services contract for managed care, health supports, the attachment C131. And this is really the guidance that we follow for, for COFER agreements around the state. A couple of things I want to highlight in there, you know, read it kind of verbatim here, but consumers served according to the terms of this contract must be provided appropriate services without delay resulting from issues of financial responsibility. Community mental health service programs and PIHPs will act ethically to provide services to consumers meeting eligibility requirements when the COFER is disputed. Now, first thing, you're going to hear consumer a lot tonight. We like to use person-first language, so please forgive the consumer references, but a lot of that's just right from the, right from the information. And really what that boils down to for me and how I've always looked at it is services cannot be delayed due to a COFER dispute. So you kind of see that, that theme as, as we go through here. Moving on with some of the questions that came up regarding COFERS. So for the county of residency requirements, I want to start with a, someone living independently, transferring to another independent situation in a different county. The general rule, general rule for persons served under the terms of this contract, the financial responsibility, CMHSP, is the one that served them in the county where they last lived independently. So that means if I live in Oakland County and I'm receiving services, maybe case management, individual therapy, psychiatric services, and I move to Wayne County, Wayne County is now going to be the COFER. They are going to be the ones who are financially responsibly, financially responsible for covering me. The following factors are used to determine whether a person is living independently. The location in which the person residing is not transient. So an example of that, if one of my children goes to live with their grandparent in a different county for the summer, needs behavioral health services, but they're going to come back to me when school starts, the county of fiscal responsibility remains Oakland County at that point. It's not going to transfer. There would be some coordination, obviously, for the services, but it's still going to remain Oakland County. A couple other items, migrant workers shall be considered the responsibility of the CMHSP in which they are housed. The intent of the individual to be part of the community shall be considered. So if someone is living temporarily in Oakland County, but their intent is to move there, they're looking for a place, then that county of fiscal responsibility would be Oakland. This, again, is for independent setting to independent setting. The location in which the person resided before moving to the county was not a boarding school, a facility such as a specialized residential or a dependent living setting as defined in the Mental Health Code utilized in Section 306. So it gets a little bit more complicated when, when working with children. Sometimes children who are in the foster care system can be a little, you know, a little sticky. But overall, the, by the rule, it's a little bit more simple. The COFER will be the county where the child and parents have their primary residence. Nice and straightforward. So for temporary and permanent court wards, the COFER is the county where the child currently resides in the community. And for adoption, the COFER is the county where the adoptive parents have their primary residence. So if this is a youth who is living in Wayne County, but then moves to a different foster home in Oakland County, the COFER goes to Oakland. Now, if you have a youth that is going to multiple foster homes, you can imagine this would get kind of complicated because they could potentially be going from county to county. Next slide, okay. So the, continuing with the county residency requirements, when it comes to dependent settings, as mentioned in the earlier slides, so again, keep the example in mind of someone living in an adult foster care home. When a person served who is living in a, living dependently chooses to relocate from County A to County B into a dependent living situation, the COFER shall remain the county in which he or she last lived independently. So if I live at home with my parents in Oakland, and then I go to an AFC home in Oakland, and then I move to an AFC home in Wayne, the county of fiscal responsibility remains Oakland because that's where I last lived independently. These settings, an individual's county of residence in the county in which the individual maintained their primary residence at the time they entered into one of the following, a dependent living setting, a boarding school, or a facility such as a specialized residential. Also considered, are individuals receiving eight hours or more per day of community living supports are considered living independently? So if I'm living at home and I receive eight or more hours a day of CLS services, then that's considered living dependently. So if I'm living there in Oakland and I move to Wayne, then I am a COFER of Oakland. Oakland is going to be paying for that one. All right, one of the questions came up, if you move from County A to County B, how long are you considered a COFER from the county of origin? So as we stated earlier, if the person moves to a dependent setting, County A, to a dependent setting, County B, the COFER is going to be County A, where they last lived independently. County A, the county of origin, remains financially responsible until the person moves, passes away, or there's a 307 transfer requested and approved. If person moves from independent setting, County A, to independent setting, County B, the COFER is County B as stated in the technical requirements. How is a COFER reconciliation performed? So I worked with the UM team to get a little bit more information. New COFER requests coming through the access team or utilization management. A formal agreement will take place through our contracts and procurement team and signed by both counties. If there's a COFER dispute, it must be resolved using the process with, with the Community Mental Health Association of Michigan listed in the COFER attachment. And if anyone was interested, I can send the COFER attachment out. But really, in my experience, this, this doesn't become a significant concern. The counties are usually really open to those discussions and take responsibility for the cases that are there. We can pull it to the end. Okay, next up, how does a COFER impact services for a person who resides in Oakland County or another county? So, you know, a couple of things, individuals have the right to choose where they live unless restricted by a court order. So we want to assure that we are supporting the individual's right to choose and the individual's ability to have freedom of movement between the counties. And also as stated in the COFER rules, the Community Mental Health Services Program shall not deny or delay requests, requested services to an individual because the individual's county of residence, as determined by this section, is in the service area of another county or Community Mental Health Service Program. Really, so therefore the, the COFER shouldn't have any impact at all, none whatsoever. One of the other questions that came up, how does a COFER impact what we pay one of our service providers for services to a person who resides in another county? And how does that other county's CMHSP or PAHP reimburse us? So OCHM pays providers the same whether they are serving someone from Oakland County or from another county. So that, that rate remains the same. If they, if it is our COFER and they're going out of county, there is some negotiation that will go on because the rates might be different depending on where they're gonna be placed. And how we pay or how we get paid, these are claims that go out. And then at times they are billed to us directly. So for each case, it's gonna be a little bit different. There are also cases where a COFER agreement would be signed and then the, the COFER county would do a direct contract with a provider in Oakland County or vice versa, kind of whatever seems to be easier. What we are continuing to try and do internal and among the counties is really standardize these processes just to make them smoother and to make the burden, the administrative burden, a little bit less. All right, a question came up of are we owed more from the other CMHSPs or do, do we owe more? And the simple answer is it's pretty even. Currently there are nine Oakland County COFERS living in other counties, so that's our fiscal responsibility. And there are eight other county COFERS living within Oakland County. So the, the costs are gonna be similar because these are gonna be dependent care settings. So either eight hours a day of more of CLS or living in some type of specialized residential facility. So really those costs are gonna be just about neutral. A question came up of how big the problem is financially and transactionally. Again, to go back to the current, the previous slide, it's really similar, nine and eight. Persons served must be provided appropriate services without delay from issues of financial responsibility. Again, I'd just like to keep going back to that, you know, we don't want to delay this. This isn't really a problem, it's a pretty standard practice. Everybody knows the drill when they hear COFER, both internal and external. We actually, and we worked not too long ago with Wayne County on a youth that was in the ED and potentially coming into Oakland County. And we had some really good dialogue with Wayne, good dialogue with DHS. And the focus was getting services and stabilizing that youth. Now, that's not to say that there are not challenges that, that come up with, with COFERS. I mentioned the DHS youth, you know, we all know that someone could go to multiple foster homes based on the need or based on the availability of a home. Or if you're unable to find a home, they might go into some type of a shelter. So that would mean that they could potentially be in multiple counties. And then that, that case is gonna kind of, you know, go along with the area. Determining who is a COFER, sometimes there can be disagreement between the counties, especially if you go from, you know, between three different counties over an episode of care. If you're going from a hospital to a residential and then to a foster home, it can get a little, little intricate. And you have to figure out who owns responsibility for the hospital stay or some brief clinical services or crisis services. The contract process can be kind of cumbersome. Technical guidance is tricky. It's, there's a lot to the technical guidance, so I would encourage anyone who's interested to, to read through it. But again, at broken record time, what I keep going back to is not to delay the services based on the COFER dispute. So that's really what we work with the majority of the time is let's get some services started. Let's get this, this individual moving forward and then we'll figure out the COFER piece later. And then lastly, most counties have different processes for COFER. Each one has a different way to contract and submit information in their system. There is sometimes a disconnect and communication barrier related to the information and the process. You know, this is a great time to have really good relationships with the other counties because then you can contact the person that you know, find out how to get them into service, how to make the transfer, or who the best person is to reach out to. Okay, then I would be happy to entertain any questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, board members, you're probably wondering, excuse me, I'm not sick, it's allergies. It's really bad this year for me, it was gardening. Anyhow, the reason this is on the agenda, I've recognized that you guys have learned a lot about fund sources, services that go on, how does it work within our county, all these things. And I thought, you know what, if you understand that very well, and I think you guys have learned that, I wanted to make sure you understood one other aspect where we deal with cross-county kinds of relationships. And COFER is one of those reared kinds of things, especially in the metro area because we're all so close going into our county or going into Wayne or going into Macomb or Washtenaw or Genesee, there isn't that much big deal. The COFER is one of those things where if you understand how the funding moves or that it doesn't move, that's important thing. So that was why I brought it up. So Adam, wonderful job.
Thank you.
That was my only comment.
Mr. Torres?
Um, thank, thank you for that, it was very complex, but sounds complex. But, so is there any kind of auditing that's done? Like, is it like annually or is it like monthly or is it as they come or as they switch over to, to know what's happening, like what's switching over to the next based on the various variables you talked about?
Yeah, so no actual auditing, we, we do enter into a COFER agreement. So we are agreeing to the, the terms of that COFER. And it is pretty clear what, if it, when, where you came into a dependent setting, once that's agreed to, there's really no, there's no change in that. You know, if I move from my home into a specialized residential in Oakland, I'm always gonna be an Oakland COFER per the technical guidelines. So whether, you know, five years down the road, even if you did audit, there's really no, there's no change in that.
Okay.
Now, does the state do any type of, of audit on that? That's a good question, I'm not, I'm not sure. But most of the COFER agreements are handled between the PIHPs, so it doesn't rise to that level.
How, how many COFER agreements do we have?
We have nine that are Oakland COFERS living in other counties. And we have eight that are out of county living in Oakland.
Okay, so it's a pretty small number, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I, I, thank you.
Pastor Jones?
I do have a question, I'm looking at your slide page number 57. I think it's the second slide, it says currently the costs are similar. Just are we owed more than other CMHSPs or do we owe more? And, and so whether it's Macomb, Wayne, Oakland, or as the gentleman said, Genesee, Washtenaw, it's the same. It's, it's, that's what this is saying, right?
So it, it's gonna be similar, yeah. So if somebody comes into, if Wayne is doing an agreement with us, the, they're going to pay the rates of the specialized residential in Oakland. If we have someone going to another county, there's gonna be some negotiation in rate. It's probably gonna be pretty similar unless it's a highly specialized facility. So if you have someone going to Great Lakes Center for Autism, you know, we know that's, that's a higher cost facility. Or if there's something very specialized about that, that might be the reason that, that they're going there. But for the most part, yeah, it's gonna be very similar.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a very dangerous question, two dangerous questions. One, so it's not, it's not cost of living or anything like that, right?
No.
Okay, so, we're in a deficit.
I'll refer to Cheryl on that.
All right, I, I just want to clear that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole question?
It was, it was a joke, Cheryl, it was a joke, disregard.
I'm glad of that.
I wouldn't just call y'all like that.
Thank you for the update, it'll go up under receive and file. Next on the agenda is the Recipient Rights Advisory Committee recommendation, Ms. Vicki Suter.
Good evening, Vicki Suter, Director of Rights and Advocacy. The RAC currently has one vacant position as we had a member who termed out completed two full terms. We did interview a candidate and the RAC committee does want to recommend this individual to be appointed to the RAC committee. She is an individual who has two adult children that had received services. She has been very involved in advocacy. She spent a number of years working for the Michigan Consumer Evaluation Team, which until recently had done surveying for us to individuals that we serve. She has, as, as well was on their board. So we believe, the committee believes in the recommendation that her experience, knowledge and advocacy would be an asset to the RAC committee. So we are asking that you approve the recommendation.
Okay, it was part of our board package, policy committee. Is there a recommendation?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Sheila, can you do the roll call?
Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess control comes back to me. Suzanne, can you give us a briefing on the events and outreach?
Yes, absolutely, good evening again, I'll go to the next slide. As you can see, there's a variety of different events that we have going on this month. A number of events we're participating in, having, hosting tables as well as some, some conferences. And we also attended a career fair recently as well as we are holding our SUD Community Workshop coming up. And it's gonna be related to trauma and recovery. That is gonna be a hybrid workshop, so it's gonna be both online and in person, as well as trainings. And we have the NAMI Honors Night coming up. We have a couple of staff who are actually nominated for that honor, so we have some staff attending that event. Next slide, please. Again, additional conferences coming up as well as the Michigan Shines Autism Gala and a couple of workshops and events that we are presenting at as well as hosting with the Peer Successes and Strategy Networking Breakfast, as well as our Autism Provider Showcase coming up at the end of the month. This is our second annual autism provider showcase, so we're really looking forward to, to hosting that event. Next slide, please. Just wanted to highlight some of the events we have coming up in May as well. I'll be, obviously highlighting, highlighting those a little bit more next month, but wanted you to be aware that we have some individuals attending the Meet the County Execs event coming up on May the 7th, as well as our Resource and Crisis Center is celebrating its 10th year. So we're gonna be hosting a little celebration for our Resource and Crisis Center in Pontiac, as well as hosting our Annual Veterans Resource Event on Saturday, maybe 11th. Next slide, please. I wanted to highlight some of the press releases, actually a couple of them have already gone out. The, the first three have already gone out. We have our Autism Acceptance Month, as well as Stress Awareness and Deaf History Month, press releases that have already gone out. I've already spoken to you about some of our advertising that we implemented, it is well underway now. So we have our SUD advertising campaign that is going to be going out throughout the rest of the year, as well as our general advertising campaign about OCHN. We actually participated in a couple of press conferences through the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, partnering with our, one of our SUD providers, the Alliance, with the Save a Life stations. And there was a press conference held actually at the end of last month. As well as last week, there was the Medication Assisted Treatment Press Conference held with the Sheriff's Office. And then we're also doing a, participating in a Fentanyl Town Hall Meeting coming up on the 16th of April. Next slide. As always, we are continuing our efforts with redetermination. I think it was, Christine already mentioned it earlier in the, the meeting. But we also continue with our, our letters, we're, you know, obviously time, continuing to ramp that down with the letters and our social media and working with individuals to help them get enrolled as well as some advertising. And then also as usual, our conference used to, we always keep our building open to the community and encourage the community members to use our building whenever needed. Next slide, please. And I wanted to do, just be able to see a visual, I wanted to share a visual of one of our advertising campaigns that I have mentioned to you over the past couple of months. This is in some of the local malls, one of them being the Great Lakes Crossing Mall. So hopefully if you're at one of that, the Great Lakes Crossing or Twelve Oaks Mall, you might see our ads. Actually, I was just at Twelve Oaks over the weekend and was able to see our ad in person and they look fabulous. So I wanted to share them with you. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Suzanne? All right, thank you so much for the efforts on outreach and events.
Thank you.
Christine Burke, you're up with advocacy.
I believe this presentation was requested by Mr. Cohen and the board. Actually, as Suzanne was presenting, I was thinking in my head, that's what advocacy really looks like at the grassroots level. Some of the things that we're looking at more organized, strategic. I did just want to bring up that we used to have a much larger work group in regards to the privatization to 98 and for anyone who was around when it was first launched. It was emotionally exhausting, it was a yo-yo. We were calling to action, we had it removed, called to action, we had it removed, and then it would come back. So really, we started out with about 100 people in the work group and advocacy fatigue set in a little bit and then, then we moved into a pandemic. So some of the things we're looking after this year and in keeping in mind, we do want to use the information from the needs assessment. Also, the county has the ECHO, means something a little different, Energizing Connections for Healthier Oakland. The, I believe they launched it, Tricia, Suzanne could correct me, but I think it was in early 2014 or 15. But it is a organization, it's a group that was pulled together by the Health Division to really implement county-wide health programs to improve the health of Oakland County residents. Next slide. Some of the topics for consideration, even, you know, just looking at high-level data that we have been receiving from the needs assessment, then also from our CAC group, our Citizens Advisory Council, the VAST began ending stigma today, just as, as people we serve talk about. Redetermination has been a priority for us this year. And advocacy really, there's, there are different levels. There's a grassroots, there's the persons we serve, there's an administrative level, and then there's the legislative level. And it's part of all of the strategy in how we communicate is knowing at which level are we supposed to be communicating our advocacy messages. Spend down is something that has been debatable in this state. For as long as I've been around, I'm looking from at Muckaya, Jonathan, we are one of the few states that require a spend down. Most states have, if you, you are either qualified for Medicaid or you're not. In, in Michigan, you are, if you have a spend down, you may, you have to spend $700 to $800 before your Medicaid kicks in every single month. In Oak, I don't know what it is now, I know right before the pandemic, it was around $800 for Oakland County residents. So that is something that we're looking at. We pulled up some of our old spend down information to readdress that. Staffing shortages, the one thing that is unique as we continue to talk about staffing shortages, and we were just at a policy conference the other day. shortages, and we were just at a policy conference the other day, or last week, last Thursday, and they were talking about, sometimes you create a solution to a problem without, unintentionally, you cause a new problem. So when the mental health funding for the schools were put in place, which is absolutely needed, even our school partners will say the same thing. What happened now is that we are competing with our school partners to hire staff. So they are advocating on our behalf that the goal was to make mental health for the schools stronger, but not at the expense of making the public mental health system weaker, because you need mental health supports in the schools, but the kids need them when they leave the schools as well. So that is something that we continue to hear about more and more. Transportation, and I think about this a lot when we talk about where our staff sits in the community, because those relationships lead to other relationships. So earlier today, we were invited to a meeting, Sheila, Adam, Frances Carly, who's talking about transportation, a few weeks ago, and our county partner said, I sit on a state group, can I invite you guys to that meeting? So then today was our first meeting, where we could then share very specific information. Those types of relationships are ongoing for us as an organization. Some of that is, if you look at Dr. P., and he had the Cranes article, Chaka just did a podcast. So it's really putting ourselves out there, being ambassadors wherever we go, whatever we're doing in terms of community. Very specific for us is our leadership roles. Dana has met with 13 different legislators to talk about our budget request for our continuum of crisis care. She has five more scheduled. A lot of what we say in those settings is that we want to build strong relationships, we want to educate, we want to be valuable, we want to have our voices heard, but we also want to listen to people. Next slide. So when we look at anything with advocacy, it does not work without our partners. We have to have community inclusion, we have to have the people we serve, we have to have those relationships with our elected officials, our community faith-based leaders, and obviously our provider network. Sometimes with advocacy, people just have this vision of it, you're always going to complain. Thank you is a form of advocacy. So when the legislators do something like they've just done, where they've said, okay, we're going to go back and look, we have to go and say thank you as well. So they're not only hearing from us when we're unhappy, that we give them credit when they've done something in the wrong, in the right direction. What we used to do with the 298 group, and what we're looking at doing again, is we would develop a calendar, and we had the people we serve develop the messages, and then we just tweaked it. So they gave us their ideas or thoughts, and then we set up, you could either do social media, you could make a phone call, you could send an email. So we would ask, at the same time, every month, whatever means of communication they felt the most comfortable, but deliver this message, whatever that topic was we were talking about for that month. So we will be doing that again, once we finish our needs assessments. The other, the other part of advocacy that is very important is our media coverage. The more people know about us, the more they want to know about us. And then it also opens up pathways for us to become subject matter experts, because somebody saw a member of our leadership speaking at a conference, or they saw a member of our leadership appear on a news program. We have been invited by the sheriff's office twice in this month to participate in two different press conferences. Once, we got our own award. Trish did a great media interview with W W J the week before. That was the placement of the 100th life station for Narcan. And then when we look back at those medias, we didn't, we weren't captured speaking, that's normal, you're going to get a 30-second soundbite. But like I said to Dana, if you looked at every story, our logo was in every story on every news station. So those are the types of alternative advocacy practices that we have that go along with some of the more strategic, which is picking in those priority areas. You can't just always be going to the legislators. You really have to be intentional on what those topics are going to be, so it doesn't feel like you're always coming just one thing after another without complaining. And we do always look to the people we serve to lead us in that. They can say my words, they can say your words, but most importantly, people want to hear their words. So that is our primary focus.
Okay. Yes, I'm the one who asked this to be put on the agenda. In listening, I wasn't here, but in listening to the last board meeting, where we had some particularly eloquent providers, they want to partner with us to increase state funding. So this is, to me, this is, I appreciate the broader reach on it, but this is specifically what we have to concentrate on. Because the budget next year is going to start in a couple months, and if they don't hear our voices, and it's not our voices, our voices are the voices of the people who serve. I'll take Jenny from Dutton Farms said that. And if we don't speak out for them, no one else is going to do it. I mean, God bless them, parents can and everything, but we need to find a way, and if it's through the state organization, and our lobbyists, whatever it takes, we are going to have to make some noise. Because I've been here for four years. The last two years, this is not sustainable financially. It is if we do this, if we cut money to the providers, and then some of them are going to go out of business, and that's not right. So I think we've kind of reached a tipping point here, and, you know, this, we're speaking for an organization that has only, you know, 6% to 7% overhead. You know, we didn't take all that money and stuff it in the bank. We moved it out, all the money we got the last couple of years due to the Medicaid, when they put everybody on Medicaid. So that's what I'm looking for. So here, the first thing I would like is for our lobbyist to get here at the most, next meeting he can get at, and tell us what is happening, what are they doing to increase the funding, because we already know that what's being done is not going to be enough. And we're not asking, we're asking for what we need, not what we want. For first, it is the need, the want can come later. So I think that's the first step. And then I will take it upon myself, with Dana, to contact the larger organization, because if the state needs a letter from 10 chairmen with the approval of their boards saying, hey, you know, you're going to bankrupt us all eventually, then if this continues, then, then so be it. But we need a little more action, and we need to make a little bit of noise, because...
So part of that is, and I should have included this and added that, CMHA and Capital Services don't do exactly what you're asking for. So they will, next week, Brad Case More will be presenting on behalf of the P I H Ps, because Dana will not, wasn't available, she actually was the first person to ask. Traditionally, what will happen with the legislators at the, you know this, right, at the appropriations meeting?
Right.
So CMHA and both Capital Services are scheduling for us to do those types of meetings. We usually are allowed to have statewide. They give us an opportunity to have four different presenters from four different organizations representing a different population. So last week was M D H H S did their presentation, and then this next week will be, to your point, it will be having people who are P H P CEOs, people who are getting services, so there are four. Those are planned, they're supposed to be ongoing throughout the year, and you're right, they're very important. One of the things that we have found, and keep being in mind, especially for the people we serve, we can bring our P I H P CEOs, we could be, bring someone like Jenny. Jenny may be able to sit in the audience, but it's very different than here, where people can just come up and give public comment. Usually, they have to be pre-approved. So we, I did hear the meeting, I was with, I spoke with Jenny after, so that is part of that ongoing plan. Those presentations primarily are set up with Capital Services and CMHA. So that, that is happening, and what I'll do for you is get a list of a detailed plan of what they're looking at, and what those presentations are going to look like between now and the end of the year, because I think the budget's going to be approved in May, is what we've talked about. But I do hear you, I'll make sure you have that more, what I would consider intentional and strategic, so that, so that people are speaking on behalf of them.
And by the way, when I use the term make noise, I don't...
No, I know what you mean.
Use it to be reckless in any way, shape, or form, but the voices have to be heard. And sometimes, a story, like the Dutton Farms, or we have 100 providers we could talk about, those stories, one story, is worth more than five people getting up there with numbers, because it brings the human element to it, and that's what we're talking about here. So I would, like I said, I would like to have our lobbyists come at, to one of our next meetings, tell us exactly what's going on, or Dana, or whoever is the main contact with the state association, what are we doing, and how do we get our providers involved? So if we can, if I can ask you, the head man up developing a plan specifically on this issue, that would be something I think that would be progress tonight.
Yeah, we'll make sure, we'll have Ben come in. He meets with our leadership once a month. I will say this about Oakland County, and it is well-known in Lansing, we have a very strong advocacy base. The reason 298 did not go through was because of what happened in Oakland County. There was a, you know, there was a moment where they said, there is nothing we can do. It's Friday at 5:00, it's going to go through on Monday, and Alan Bolter called and said, what did you guys do? Because they had 1,200 emails within 15 minutes. So, so to your point, doing more strategic and having those voices, and I'll make sure Ben gets to be, come here.
Right. And I think taking, if I were to borrow, because Pastor Jones, I don't mean to take your thunder, because I know you're going to say this, because you said it earlier tonight, if we can put together some information that we can share with the providers, they'll go do it on their own. We don't have to prompt them. I mean, they, because they, that, we're getting a lot of complaints, and I don't mind taking the heat, that's why we all got this job. So we'll take the heat. But the understanding isn't, it's not things that we're doing, it's the funding that's getting cut or delayed, or whatever, that is causing the issue. And if we can communicate that effectively, because that's being transparent, and that's the reality, then I think we will get those, get the providers talking to their state legislators, and they're going to hear more than just from O C H N, who, you know, they'll view us as, you know, one of the 10 bureaucracies that are, you know, to use that term lightly, that handle and oversee all these funds. And when they understand more of the human impact, believe me, that makes a big change, when legislators understand people in their communities. And I know many of them do. I mean, they have done, but they have to understand what's happening now with this Medicaid redetermination situation, and how that's impacting all of our funding.
Yeah, I would recommend Alan might be a better speaker for that, because Alan's really going to speak about the whole statewide, where Ben really focuses on O C H N. And I think that, to your point...
Well, I don't know if we're going to get Alan, but...
Yeah.
But I think, but I think, but Ben, Ben is coordinating with others, so I would like to see Ben, but if we can get Alan, if he's on, if he can come on Zoom and talk to us, that would be very helpful, too.
I'll make sure to take care of that for you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much. So I just wanted, while we're on other business, before we go to public comment, I got an email, I don't know if anyone else has, from CMHA, but there is a special telehealth, sorry, there's a special team meeting on April 10th at 10:00, so Wednesday, the 10th. Apparently, the treasurer is not choosing to run again, she's Detroit Wayne, so there's a void, and there is a special meeting. At least three people now have raised their hand, saying, I'm, I would like to be nominated to run for treasurer. One is Bruce Caswell from Lifeways, so that's Southeast Region, Gail Dugan, or Dugan from Onboard, a Western Region, and then also Eric from Detroit Wayne has also raised his hand. So I know this was sent to Dana, I don't know if anyone else in the organization got it, if we've sent it out to others that are aboard here. I can forward it to you, Sheila, but again, it's for a half-hour, 10:00 phone call, two days from today. Yep, today's only Monday, that's right. So if anyone can make it, feel free, it's, you know, it's to, if there's anyone else that wants to run in that role, if it's to vote yes for the metro region to do that nomination. All right? And while I'm talking about it, I'm thinking, just going to forward this on to you right now, Sheila. Okay. At this point, we're now at public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comment? Hearing none, is there anyone remote that would like to make public comment?
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Not hearing or seeing anything, right? Okay. So at this point, I'm watching the clock. I also know there's an NCAA championship game on, I think at 7:30. But is there any board members that would like to make public comment tonight? Anyone? I can't. All right, hearing none, we are in adjournment.